All right, good morning, everybody. It's 9:05, and I'm going to start this meeting of the Planning Commission. We have a quorum of five. The first item on the agenda is the public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should come up to the podium and speak, address all comments to us, and begin by stating their name and address for single-member district. And try to limit your remarks to three minutes if possible. Would anyone like to speak in open, public comment?
Aaron Vanoy is the only one signed up.
Okay.
Good morning. Aaron Vanoy, Planning and Development Services Director for the City of San Angelo. I just wanted to spend my three minutes just talking real briefly about the purpose of our Planning Division and our Development Services and what we try to do with development. These are not about any specific cases whatsoever. It's just about just general information. And so, you know, there's our zoning charge to us of what we try to do in zoning. The purpose of this zoning is to promote public health, safety, morals, or the general welfare, and protecting and preserving places and areas of historical, cultural, and architectural importance and significance. So our zoning has a lot of police powers, but it is trying to protect the public in some way with safety, with public health, general welfare, and at times even the morality of things. And you think about that, about where we allow alcohol sales, or maybe where we allow tobacco sales, things like that. Land Development Subdivision, these are just three principles out of a lot. On front of you, there are the whole Chapter Two Purpose Statements. These are just some of those principles that come out of there. For land development, the subdivision has orderly, safe, and efficient development of city and surrounding area, efficient use and extension of municipal utilities, prevent scattered or premature subdivision of land that would involve danger or injury to health, safety, or prosperity by reason of lack of water supply, drainage, transportation, or public services, or necessitate an excessive expenditure of public funds for the supply of such services. I really like that last piece. I'm very, get it very interested of how much it costs city taxpayers to maintain things that we already have on the ground, and how we make decisions about what we maintain in the future. So planning is really about making decisions for the benefit of the public good through zoning, land development, and subdivision ordinances, and decisions which are fiscally responsible for the future of our community. Today, you're going to have some very difficult challenges in front of you, some cases that will make all of us think about what is good for today and what is good for our future. And I just want to leave you with those things to say those are, things are very, very important. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Aaron. All right, with no one else speaking in public comment, I'm going to close public comment. The consent agenda, we're going to skip over. We do not have any consent agenda items. So we're right into the regular agenda. The Planning Commission has final authority for approval of conditional uses. Appeals may be directed to the City Council. Case one, CU 2413, 2646 Colorado Avenue. Request for conditional use for short-term rental located 2646 Colorado Avenue.
Good morning. Austin Reed, Planner. This request comes to you out of District Number Five, Karen Hazy Smith's district. We are in the Santa Rita neighborhood. This is RS One, Single Family Residential Zoning. As you mentioned, we have requests for approval of a conditional use for a new short-term rental. This property has passed its safety inspection, and as you can see, they have the required parking. Here's a look at the Santa Rita neighborhood overall right now. The blue stars, of course, are current requests. They're towards the west. We have nine currently active conditional uses for short-term rentals on our green star. We have seven expired and four denied. We mailed out 23 notices, did not receive any in favor. We've received six opposed, although I think about two or three of these are under common ownership. With that, we are recommending approval. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them. We do have the one typical condition that they operate in a manner consistent with our ordinance and that they have to renew every June.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the staff? Thank you, Austin.
Thanks.
All right, we're going to open it up for public comment.
Okay, so we do have the applicant, Carolina Ojeda. Is that right? If you want to come up first.
Good morning.
Carolina Ojeda, I am the owner of the property. And we've had, with this specific property, quite a few bumps during the road to be able to present finally today in front of you guys. One of the biggest issues and concerns has been one of her neighbors, Mr. Harlow. And this morning, we were just able to visit with him, and he had approached us with his specific concerns and why he is opposing for us to have an STR in that street. What he explained to us is that he's concerned about the number of cars, the amount of people that will be inside of the STR, and also noise. So we have other three STRs that we manage. I don't have any manager. I am the person that he would contact directly, or the city, or whoever had any problems, and I would be the person taking care of the matter. That's number one. Number two, we are properties that do not allow for any type of parties, even though in the past we have been told that there are permission to gather and have parties. Our properties are strictly not for gathering. Who has booked our properties? And this is why I feel it's not a bad idea to have this type of STR. Mainly families that are traveling with loved ones, elderly, that maybe booking two different hotel rooms are not necessarily convenient. Some, again, people, their grandparents of ASU students are coming here for a game, or their family members that have somebody in the hospital requiring major surgery, requiring a prolonged hospitalization, that need a place to stay where they can cook, where they can rest, and they can have other social areas like a living room. That's the type of people that we have rentals for. We also have people that work. They come in as contractors. And I think that's where maybe Mr. Harlow, our neighbors, are concerned that maybe, you know, it's going to be a large group of men drinking, making noise, and of course, we're going to follow the city's rules on all of that, but also our own STR rules that we can set up and limit on the amount of people as well as noise. I'm not sure if you have any questions for me or Hosses.
I don't think I have any questions, Luke.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Caroline.
Okay, next, we have Mr. Harlow. If you, do you want to go next, or you want Vanessa? Okay. Whichever. Okay, so Vanessa Bond?
Boyd.
Boyd, I'm sorry.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Vanessa Boyd, and I am here to represent Mr. David Harlow at 2634 Colorado Avenue. He is a neighbor and an invested party. And the Planning, of course, Planning Commission, of course, may deny the request after considering testimony given at the hearing. While the interested parties acknowledge that the technical legality of an STR use in RS One District, we do oppose it, and I'll list the reasons why. Development should result in a logical and orderly pattern of urban development in the community. The current owner-operator bought the property with unpermitted, oversized buildings, proceeded to short-term rental use without a license, and advertised the property on Airbnb for up to eight occupants, which exceeds the maximum allowed by code. Additionally, the high occupancy created nuisance violations such as recurring noise, waste, and off-site parking. We ask the Commission to deny the request for STR use to protect a logical and orderly pattern of urban development. The property does not meet the criteria of Section 208(c) in regards to minimizing adverse effects and impacts on adjacent properties. And to be consistent with the applicable zoning ordinance and district intent statement, development should conform with standards of the district in which it is located. The RS One Single Family Residential District is intended to provide single-family residences at medium densities with a single household of not more than four individuals unrelated by blood, marriage, or adoption. However, a short-term rental may be occupied by up to six individuals unrelated. Uses where tenancy may be arranged for a shorter period than month-to-month or longer are not considered residential. They're transient lodging, rented on less than a monthly basis, and considered a hotel or motel use, and is classified as retail sales and service category, a commercial-use category, and deemed entertainment-oriented. I did provide a photo on the second page, if you don't mind to look at the handout that we provided. This photo shows in the center the subject property. If you look at the photo we provided, you'll see that the total footprint of these structures dominates its neighbors. There are 14 single-family homes on the north side of Colorado Avenue on this block, averaging 1,417 square feet. 2646 Colorado is dead center of those 14, and is not only the largest footprint of all of them, it's 16% larger than the next-largest home. This property is now over 2,000 square foot. The code for an STR could allow up to six unrelated adults and five vehicles. This is clearly above and beyond the density of the rest of the neighborhood. We ask the Commission to deny the request because its large size and high occupancy, commercial, transient, entertainment-oriented hotel lodging in comparison to the neighboring homes does not conform to the intent and standards of the district, and will have adverse impacts on adjacent properties. The Planning Commission may attach such conditions to a conditional use approval as are necessary to prevent or minimize adverse effects on other property in the neighborhood. If you are not willing to deny the request, then we would ask, to prevent the recurrence of adverse effects of a party house, we ask the Planning Commission to, at a minimum, impose conditions limiting use of 2646 Colorado Avenue as an STR to a maximum of four unrelated persons in accordance with the residential intent and desire of the district, and in accordance with their verbal statement. Limiting STR use to four persons, or limiting STR use to the primary structure only, excluding the addition in the back, would minimize adverse effects on neighboring properties. Since they have verbally committed to limiting the number of persons, we would ask you to include that as a condition. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Boyd.
Just a minute. We have John Seaton also. Did he want to speak?
John Seaton, single member, District Five. Pretty well stated what I had intended to say in more detail, and I appreciate her statement. I do live in the neighborhood, and I believe that this will, has the potential of changing the characteristics of the neighborhood. And I did send an email in, and I don't, I hope that you have access to it. It specified some details, more details about what I think about this. But I prefer that it not be approved. I think there are long-term repercussions that are possible that would have an adverse effect on the neighborhood. I would rather not have to deal with those adverse effects.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Seaton.
And then, Mr. Harlow, did you want to speak? Okay, Mr. Harlow.
Good morning.
Good morning. Just before I make my comments, I had a, my wife and I had a good meeting with the owners of this property, but these comments that I have been, and my wife have been working on, and Vanessa's done a wonderful job, need to be presented, and I'm going to proceed. My name is David Harlow. I live at 2634 Colorado. I am opposed to granting the request for a conditional use of 2646 Colorado Avenue as a short-term rental. However, I am aware of the framework upon which your commission operates, and ask that if the request be granted, the following comments be considered. 2646 Colorado is in the middle of the block of 2,600 to 2,700 Colorado. This block is actually two blocks long. There are 29 homes on this block, all of which were built as three-in-two or two-in-one. Most of these homes are owner-occupied. I'm aware of only one home on this block where more than four people live, and that is a home with a couple with three small children, and they have only one car. The driveway at 2646 is a circular driveway designed in such a way that the area between the approaches is so small that a car cannot park on the street in front of the house without blocking part of the approach. I'm very concerned that the occupants of the STR could exceed that of the majority of the homes on that block, and ask the Commission to consider a restriction to limit the guests to no more than four. I'm also very concerned that the occupants of the STR will not utilize the available off-street parking due to the design of the circular driveway and park on the street in front of the neighbors' homes. I ask the Commission to consider a restriction to require the occupants to park on the available off-street parking area on the property at 2646 Colorado. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harlow. Appreciate it.
And then Chair Stripling, the applicant has asked to speak again. It is up to you.
Okay.
So in regards to the initial concerns of us operating, this was within a few weeks. As soon as we received modification, we ceased to operate immediately. In regards to the size and code compliance, and that's exactly what I have been talking about, this property, when we purchased it, we had been told that all permits had been done. Unfortunately, that was not necessarily true. Through the city and through our approval process, we worked with the city as well as a previous owner and builder, and he was able to get all permits approved, including for the driveway and the back structure. So we got the, all of that approved. And that's been several months' process, so the property has not been an STR. So I, I think what Mr. Harlow is requesting is not unreasonable. I, I definitely could, I don't know who we would be talking to in regards to the amount of cars that can be parked. We have a covered garage and also that curved area, so I'm not sure what the city would say, if city ordinance would allow for a parking, amount of parked cars inside of that actual property, not on the street and not on our neighbors' properties.
Okay.
I have no problem working on that and keeping that strict on my STR rental and the rules. In regards to the amount of people, there is two bedrooms inside of the property, and then the back structure is a bunk bedroom. So I, I don't know if we could also, if it's the car, the amount of cars, that's the concern? If this is family and traveling with kids, could it be considered to, say, four adults and maybe two kids, and make it a six people?
Mr. Chairman, can I address that?
If you don't mind, I'd like to let the applicant finish.
Okay. Just something on the occupancy, once she's.
Okay.
Oh, okay. And I'll follow the rules, just, you know, that's fine, just tell me. I don't know, whatever the rules are, we'll follow those.
What other comments did you have?
That's it, that's it. If it's four, then it's four. If kids, could be considered four adults and then two kids, because they're in the same car, right? They're not getting extra cars in the parkways, so.
Okay. I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
You, I believe that the first time you spoke, you mentioned that you had other short-term rental properties that you operate.
Yes, sir.
How many properties do you have?
It's three, and the next one is going to be also on the agenda. There's, yeah.
So three plus this one?
Yes.
Okay.
And so far, we haven't.
And you're the operator for all of those?
Yes, yes. There's no intermediary.
You're the point of contact for them?
Yes. And my neighbors have our personal information, our contact number, where they can call us at any time, and we can take care of any concerns.
Okay.
There's nobody else.
Okay. Does anyone else have questions for the applicant? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want me to wait, or?
No, that's, we're going to, we're going to cover it when we discuss. Is there any other public comment, Ray?
There's nobody else signed up.
Okay. I'm going to close public.
I'm signed up.
Oh, yeah, okay. Come on up.
James Skinner. I'm the attorney for Caroline Fernando, and I just want to point out that this is a conditional use permit that has to be renewed every year.
Yes, sir.
And so if any concerns or anything comes up, this will definitely be brought back up in this commission. As for the restrictions on people who can do there, there's already restrictions in the code about having, having two adults per bedroom over the age of 18. That limits that down to six, as it is already. And the Alcoyers own a property already further down on Colorado, which is an STR, which is operated in a very peaceful manner while it's been in that neighborhood. And so I think any concerns, they've got a history showing that they've been good stewards of their properties and good tenants. And so we just ask that this property be approved for an STR.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Skinner. All right, anyone else? All right, I'm going to close public comment. Brandon, you had a, you had a comment about occupancy that I think you wanted to make.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion about the restrictions because in our code, when we codify ordinances, we wait until we have a bunch of ordinances to codify them all at the same time. But new ordinances are posted, they're just not in the section, they're on like a homepage showing what adopted ordinance is not yet codified.
Okay.
And they're individually listed. And so those assembly and occupancy restrictions were changed in the newest ordinance, and it was taken out specifically because of some recent cases on assembly and that you couldn't do that specific to STRs unless you had a pretty good basis for doing that. And so the current restrictions would be whatever applies to residential. And I guess because of those cases, I would suggest not imposing restrictions different than that.
Could you give us the, the occupancy limitations in residential? Do you know?
I'll have to turn it over to air.
Well, as I just did a quick search, currently in the zoning ordinance, we don't have a specification of occupants in our residential zoning. We do for community houses, and that's a very specific thing on community houses.
Why?
That meet a very specific state definition. Our, the rule of thumb is two adults per bedroom.
Okay.
Obviously, that doesn't count children and things like that. But it's also about occupants that are spending the night, as opposed to coming for a dinner party, or some kind of reception or something else.
Yes.
So that does make a difference. There was a question about the parking.
Yes.
The only requirement in the zoning ordinance is the two required parking spaces that should be paved. All parking surfaces should be paved. They have a lot of parking spaces. And as some of y'all may be aware, this case did go to the ZBA for the structure in the back.
Yep.
They did get denied a variance for the size of the structure, and so they have since then pulled a permit and changed, added on to their house so that it meets the floor-area ratio of RS One zoning district.
Okay.
So it does meet the, all the structures do meet the floor-area ratio for that zoning district.
So this lot is in full compliance with building codes?
Yes, it is.
As it stands today?
Yes, it is.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff?
You, I guess there haven't been any kind of police complaints or anything else on the prior properties, to your knowledge. It seemed like everything was very peaceful.
Yeah, not that we're aware of.
All right. Anyone else wish to share their thoughts about this case? Could you go back to the, to the map that shows the approval? The, the notices? And I have a question on that. Okay, so in some zoning cases, I believe it's zoning cases, if there's enough opposition within the notification area, there can be appeals. Does that apply to conditional uses?
Well, conditional uses can be appealed to City Council. I think you're referring to a rezoning that would take, if there's over, I'm trying to think of the number, but I want to say over 25% of, of the opposition, then it would take a supermajority to approve. But we're checking on that. Give us just a few moments.
Okay.
But I don't think it.
While they're looking that up, I'm going to share some of my thoughts. I'm very familiar with this neighborhood, and the pictures that you, that you guys showed of the house indicate that a lot of, a lot of money's been put into it. It's been cleaned up, it looks really nice. You know, we've, we've gone through painstaking hearings on short-term rentals, and it's a very polarizing and divisive issue for our community. And the ordinances that we settled on provide limitations and protections to not proliferate neighborhoods, but to allow them in neighborhoods in certain numbers. And the, the limitation that we have in place is the separation between, between properties, and it's, I think, 500 feet. This, this property meets the distance requirement. The operator has, in my opinion, shown a commitment to the property and to the, to the neighborhood, and a willingness to work with the neighbors, which I think is, is very good for properties like this. We want operators that are very active and responsive to neighbors that, that have concerns. And so I'm, I'm inclined to support the, the request. Did you guys find the?
It doesn't apply to conditional uses.
Okay. All right. So does anyone else have thoughts they wish to share, or would someone like to make a motion, please?
I'll make a motion if it is presented.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That's five-zero to approve. Thank you. Next item is CU 2414, 2302 Waterloo Street. Request for conditional use to allow short-term rental located at 2302 Waterloo.
Thank you. Austin Reed, Planner. This request comes to you out of District Number Four, Lucy Gonzalez's district. It is in the central neighborhood, RS One zoning again, and we have, as you mentioned, a request for approval of a conditional use for a new short-term rental. So here's a look at the central neighborhood overall. You see the blue stars are subject property. There are five currently active, and two that have expired. You may notice that green star is awfully close to the subject property, so they did originally apply earlier in the year and receive approval of a zoning variance back when it was variable. So we mailed out 26 notices. As far as I'm aware, we did not receive any responses. So we are recommending approval, subject to two conditions. Our usual first condition, that they maintain a short-term rental in a manner consistent with Sections 406 and 804. And then they have not yet completed their inspections. Typically, short-term rentals now would be required to do that before they come to you, but they are under the old rules as they applied earlier in the year. So they would be required to get that done within 60 days. And they are not to operate during this time. So if you have any questions?
Could you go back to the map, please?
This one?
What is the distance between the green star and the blue star?
I want to say it was 2, 300, somewhere in that range.
Just 301.
Okay. So that would be less than the 500-foot requirement?
Correct.
Yeah, what did you, what did you say?
Yeah, so, so they hit, sorry. They originally applied for the conditional use back, and I think it was maybe April or May, under the old ordinance. Now, at that time, they were within the 500 feet, and they applied for a zoning variance to have a lesser distance, back before the new ordinance was passed. They did receive approval of that variance. So this is the last one you should ever see that received a distance variance, but they did get that. Their application has been on hold since then because they were trying to resolve some building permits and inspection issues.
So the zoning board of adjustments?
Yes.
Granted, a variance to the distance requirement?
Correct.
That we've now established for. That we've now established for STRs?
It was before the ordinance had changed. Like I said, their application has been on hold for a while, so they received approval of this variance months back.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions for Austin?
How far away is that from Lee Middle School?
More than the 500 feet, I'd say that.
It, it was like 700 and something.
Okay. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
We're going to open it up for public comment. Ray, is there anyone on the, on the list for this case?
The applicant, Carolina Ojeda.
And, so for this specific property, similar situation, we had purchased a property under the impression, and it had been noted, or checked out that all permits had been done. They were not, because again, when we started our application for STR, the city didn't notice there had been some major renovation and changes. So we've reached out to one of the local builders who's actually helping us and has already gone through the city. So we're, we're getting all of our pertinent permits, make sure that this is a safe home for us to have families in there. And, and also with the distance from the other STR, it's, when we started the process, the laws were just changing, so they were able to approve us for the, for the distance. But I, that's, that's the, I don't have anything else to say, so.
So you have not obtained the inspection?
No, sir. Because of the building changes, we need to have first the permits by, so the previous builder made the changes but never asked for permits, so we are getting those permits from whoever.
Okay.
They not do their job, we're working on it. And the city knows we bring contact every day with them, so, yes.
Could you give us an idea of a timeframe that you expect to be able to obtain?
Brian Benson, he, actually, we're meeting with him at 11:00 and, and going through all the drawings, so we're hoping within the next 10 days.
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
Yep.
Anyone else have questions for the applicant?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then that is it for public comment that signed up.
Chairman, I can confirm that Mr. Benson has reached out to us specifically on this property a, a couple of times. We're working through a few issues, and so they, they are in that process.
Okay.
Trying to get it resolved.
There's no more public comment? All right, so I'm going to close public comment. The, the, the only thing that really concerns me about this property is having another one that's less than 500 feet. So can you guys help explain how this works? How long has the other property been operating?
I, I can look in to see how long the other property's been operating, but they did make an application that was accepted prior to the new ordinance, and so they were essentially grandfathered in as the city had accepted that application. As you recall, our old process was to accept applications and then, then do the inspection afterwards, where when the new ordinance came forward, we do all the inspections before. And so technically, they're grandfathered in under those old rules that allows them to solve this inspection side. They did go to the zoning board of adjustment before the new ordinance came forward. ZBA did approve a distance variance. I would hesitate to recommend or, or suggest that we should make a decision based on that distance. That really wouldn't, if the zoning board of adjustment made a finding that the distance was appropriate, that usually should stand here at planning commission.
Okay.
What's the timeframe of the applicability of that variance? Does it just stay with the property forever?
Yes, it does. Now, there's, well.
I, I would say it's not to the property, it's to their, I want to call it a license, not really a license, but for whenever they have the conditional use, if that ever goes away, then that variance is going to go away.
So if they forget to renew, let's just say?
Right.
It would go away?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's correct, I apologize. But yes, it's really for the, the benefit of that short-term rental that you're considering today. If they expire and don't renew or, or something happens, then that, that distance variance would go away.
So just to be clear, that also would apply to the other property that is?
That is correct.
300 feet away. So if they failed to come in, in June and renew, then?
That buffer goes out to that full 500 feet from the blue star or the green star, whichever one, if one of them chooses to stop being an STR for some reason.
Do we know if the green stars had any complaints on the property or anything?
I'm going to say I don't think we know, because we normally check that periodically, but not, I don't know that we studied up that for this case.
Aaron, refresh my memory on the notification to the STR owners. Are they all aware of the June timeframe? And will we be sending subsequent reminders? Because the point that everybody's bringing up is very serious. If you miss it, you're out.
That, that is correct. I think that's a great point to bring up, is that, yes, this June, there will be that process to renew. In fact, it starts happening in May. I know our team is already looking at how do we do that, and they've already got some letters prepared. In fact, here in the next month or so, they're going to actually send out some letters to remind them that this is going to be coming up. We're also working on a, a software implementation that is going to get our website up to date, and so people will be able to search for those things a lot easier. So yes, that is very critical and important, that current STR owners that are legal need to know that. Those that have not decided to come in to be illegal, they will have to still go through the process. We're still working on those.
Okay, I got one last question. The, this property does not have the, the safety inspection passed. Does our ordinance require that they have a, a safety inspection passed? How is, how does the ordinance address the safety inspection?
Yes, they must have a safety, our new ordinance must have a safety inspection before they even come to you. Now, again, this application began before the new ordinance started, and the old ordinance said they must get a certificate of occupancy. Well, we've changed that language now. When they did go out to do the inspection, it was observed that there had been items done without permits. That was not a result of the current owner.
Right.
That was a property that they purchased this way, and they've been working with a contractor to get those items resolved.
Okay. So we're dealing with special circumstances on multiple fronts?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have questions for the staff, or want to share their thoughts, or make a motion?
So obviously, under the, the new guidelines, you know, we wouldn't consider this, but can, being the fact that the ZBA had already made the ruling on adjusting the distance between the two properties, I'm going to go forward with approving as presented by staff.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to grant the conditional use. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Five zero. CU 2426, 1217 Woodruff Street, conditional use for short-term rental located at 1217 Woodruff.
Good morning, Ray Limeberry Planner. This one is 1217 Woodruff Street, and it is also seeking a conditional use for a short-term rental. It is in District Four, Lucy Gonzalez, Bel Air neighborhood. It is RS1, and they did pass their safety inspection. It is the only one in that neighborhood. So we received two in favor and two in opposition. We did receive a phone call on this one also, from one of the neighbors in opposition. They just don't want a short-term rental in their neighborhood. So staff is recommending approval, as long as, with the condition that they follow the zoning ordinance Sections 406 and 804.
And they've passed the safety inspection?
They have passed the safety inspection.
Okay. Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. We're going to open it up for public comment.
We only have one, and it is a representative of the owner-operator, Jeremy. Okay. If you have questions, he's willing to speak otherwise.
Okay. Anyone else want to close public comment? Take thoughts or a motion?
Make a motion if it is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. CU 2427, excuse me, 254 Glenna Drive, a request for conditional use for a short-term rental located at 254 Glenna Drive.
Good morning again, Ray Limeberry Planner. And this is at 254 Glenna. It is a request for a conditional use for a short-term rental. It is in District Two, Tom Thompson. It is the Bluffs neighborhood. It is zoned RS1, and they also have passed their safety inspection.
All right.
So there is four currently operating. There is one that is expired, and then the yellow star is the current applicant. We mailed out 28 notices. We've actually received five in opposition. There was one on my desk this morning. But all of them just do not want one in the neighborhood. A few of them have talked to the owner, who is also the operator, and they were kind of on the fence. They really don't want it in their neighborhood, but they do like the owner. So with that, staff is recommending approval, with the condition that they follow Sections 406 and 804. With that, is there any questions?
You, you had a picture of the garage. Do you have a picture of the front of the house by chance? Okay.
Sorry, I was trying to show parking.
All right. Any questions for the staff? Thank you, Ray. Can I open it up for public comment?
The only public comment signed up is the owner. If you have any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, if you have any questions, he is there.
Okay. I'm going to close public comment if the owner does not wish to speak, and take thoughts or a motion.
Make a motion if it is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero to approve. All right. Rezonings and comprehensive plan amendments. The council has final authority for approval of rezonings and amendments to the comprehensive plan. Case one, PD 2405, 2298 East Houston Hart Frontage Road, The Crosswinds. A request to rezone to a planned development to allow a mixed-use development with an underlying RS3 zoning, and to allow zero lot line, twin home, townhome duplex, and two-family residential with modified setbacks.
Thank you, Chairman. Aaron Vinoy, Director of Planning Development Services. This is a project that came in front of you about two years ago. Came, actually, at that time, it was described as a planned development, but for some reason was assigned a zoning number. And today really is a cleanup of this project, as at the time, they requested duplexes and two-family living in their application, but that did not get into the final language of the ordinance that was passed through city council. So you see this area over here, just off of the west of Smith Boulevard, you see a multifamily structure there. You see this vacant area there. They've been coming in, and now they're ready to start moving forward with some development. This really is, and you can see that says 15 acres, that's really not 15 acres, that's about 21 acres right in there, and it comes all the way over here to Montague or Montague, depending on which part of the south you're from. So, yes. But this is just north of the Shannon facility that's out here, and a prime area for development out in this Paul Ann neighborhood area. It is just south of Houston Hart. They do have a buffer up here that they want to continue with commercial. And one thing that we learned in the last month through some different folks coming and learning is that when you put the rooftops in, you start getting commercial to come. And so the Paul Ann area has been lacking in some general neighborhood commercial, general commercial, things like that. And so with the rooftops that are proposed in this development, there's a good chance that more commercial will come into this neighborhood. But we did send out, again, 18 notification letters. We did not receive any back this time or last time in support or opposition. Staff is recommending approval of the zone change for this property. It's listed as Houston Hart, but as you'll see probably in the next month, they're going to come through with a revision to their, their currently approved final plat that will shows the new streets and how they're going to lay out their lots for their development. But we are recommending approval of this from that property there on Houston Hart Frontage Road, from the Z22-27 to a planned development, PD 24-05, with the following items. They're asking or requesting a 20-foot front yard setback, a 15-foot backyard setback, a change to the floor area ratio to .70. Currently, it's under RS3, which has a .60, just to make sure that that's cleared. And then the double frontages on the ends of the blocks, if there's a double frontage scenario that comes in, that they would have a single front yard that those structure would face the same directions as the adjacent structures. With that, are there any questions for me?
What's the road, the road width?
I think they're currently platted at a 50-foot right-of-way and a 40-foot local road through there, which would be an extension of this and that kind of comes up and then comes across this area. They also have, I think somewhere right in here, that they have a, a road that goes back there and comes back this way, that they would have a little bit of road on their plat. That will come forward, I believe, next month, because they are looking at the first of the year to start moving dirt around and start developing this area. Right now, their, their current idea due to market demand is potentially duplexes, but they also may mix in some single-family housing. They may do some, some things like that. So they're trying to look at something flexible that works with the market a little faster than what some of our processes are, which we are in support of, because we do know this part of town does need some housing. You go down Bell Street, down to the base, this area just needs, needs housing out here in, in Paul Ann, and we think as more rooftops come in, then more commercial development will follow behind.
I think the location of, of this, this density is good. It's, it's budding up to commercial, it has apartments on the eastern boundary of it. I think, I think the density makes a lot of sense. The double front lot variance, does that include Montague?
That's a good question. I don't remember their lot layout, to be honest with you, if they had two lots facing Montague.
Yeah.
Or if they had them all facing what would be, I think that's Anne Drive. I could be wrong on that, but I think it's Anne. We could look at that. I, I know obviously, Montague could have a little bit more higher traffic than what Anne maybe because of that, that corner there.
As I'm looking at this, I, I don't think I'm as concerned about double frontage within the development, but turning off of the, turning off of Montague onto whatever the road is that's coming into it, I might like to have a little more setback on that corner lot.
Yeah. Well, currently, if they're double frontage, it would be 25 and 25. They are asking for 25 on one side, which would mean five on the other. In this case, you may say anything that abuts this area, that abuts Montague, that's a double frontage. Maybe we go to a 10-foot or a 15-foot side yard for this side that's on one of the street frontages.
Okay, so I, you're going to have to clarify. So we have? Okay, so you're gonna have to clarify. So we have, on the double front lots?
Yes.
Yes.
So usually if you're facing-
So we've got a, we have a 20-foot front yard setback.
Correct. Be 20-foot, and then this side would be a 5-foot, be shorter on that side. If this is Montague-
If we didn't have, if we didn't allow for, if we didn't grant the variance, we would have 20 on two sides?
That is correct.
Okay.
Does that give enough billable space, though?
That may be something they would have to check back on their plat for these particular lots. I know the engineer is here as well as the applicant. They might be able to give some clarity of how those lots are laid out on that corner. I just don't recall exactly what that plat looks like, but they are looking to modify their plat, potentially having maybe some wider lots if they're looking at a duplex scenario.
And we're gonna see the plat next month, Erin?
That is correct.
We're just looking at rezoning today.
That is correct.
Okay. Alright. Anyone else have questions for the staff? Thank you, Erin. I'll open it up for public comment.
Russell?
Good morning. Russell Gully with SKG Engineering.
Good morning.
What we're proposing to do ultimately when we come back with the plat is to go to 72-foot wide lots. On the Montague side, that one will be wider, not 72, but either 77 or 82, to allow for at least 10 feet. We have some utilities we'll need to put in on the side there as well, so that one corner lot will be wider.
Okay.
This mainly helps maybe even on some of the internal streets inside.
Yep.
We typically always, on those corner or double frontage lots, we typically always try to build in at least an additional, you know, it's a typical 5-foot side setback, but we add 5 feet to those end lots, so that at a minimum, we're trying to be at least 10 feet off of the property line, which then puts you 15 feet off of back of curb there, so.
Okay.
Really, just would be happy to answer any questions, and we thank staff for working with us on this. The floor area ratio, it really allows us to potentially do two-story. You know, the setbacks kind of define what we can build within, but that .7 will allow for an opportunity maybe to do a little bit larger homes. Not that we're gonna do every one that way, but potentially in the mixed use and the mixed size in there, that .7 would really help that potential for a little bit larger duplex homes, if you will, on those lots. So thank you for your consideration. Would ask for approval.
Thanks, Russell. Alright, Ray, we got anyone else?
That's the only one signed up for this one.
Okay. Alright. Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. Alright. Case number two, Z 2414, Block 53 of Laskers Edition. A request for approval of a zone change from single-family residential to low-rise multifamily for properties located on Block 53 of Laskers Edition.
Thank you. Austin Reed Planner. This request comes to you out of the Reagan neighborhood. We are in District Number Four, Lucy Gonzalez's district. The vision plan for these properties is neighborhood, and it spans about 1.13 acres. We have a request to rezone from RS1 to RM1. There's an existing church structure there on the corner at 36 West 24th. I think it's the applicant's intention is to convert this to a multifamily residence. Most of the properties next to it are vacant or unused, although there is one residence. We mailed out 24 notices, did not receive any in support. Received one opposed from across the street, and he seemed to dislike the idea of the church remaining. So here's a look at the zoning. On the left, you can see it's mostly RS1 around it, although this RM1 will connect back to the CGCH that runs up and down along Chadburn. On the right, we have our vision plan. It's split between neighborhood and commercial, although multifamily will fit into both of these. So our staff rationale, we think it's compatible with the surrounding area. Its proximity to North Chadburn and the CGCH zoning makes RM1 zoning appropriate. We also think there's a demonstrated community need for diversity in housing, and of course, a multifamily can help to accomplish that. We also don't think there will be any immediate adverse effects on the natural environment. And I've included this photo, so you can kind of see the other kind of pockets of RM1 that connect back to that CGCH along the corridor. With that, we are recommending approval, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Alright. Thank you, Austin.
Thank you.
I'll open it up for public comment.
I'm gonna start with Shane. I don't know how to pronounce your last name, I'm sorry.
Mize.
Mize.
Hello there. My name is Shane Mize. I, we have the church right there on the corner that we bought. I do acquisitions and marketing for the owner. Really, we're just asking for approval. Right now, when we bought it, the church was vacant. There's a little house right next door that was kind of a parsonage that's vacant. We'd like to turn it into some affordable housing. It's gonna take a lot of planning and a lot of money, and so, you know, I'd like to think we'd provide a lot of jobs for contractors, as well as just, I don't know 100% what our plan is, if we're gonna go with, kind of try to do HUD housing and kind of go that route, so we can help the community there that way. But really, I would just ask for approval. Otherwise, it's not much use. It doesn't get much tax revenue. It's kind of decaying as it just sits vacant, so we'll go in and have to redo plumbing, electrical, I mean, you name it, firewalls, etc. So again, just kind of trying to provide more housing that's affordable, and that's also nice and new. You know, if we keep it, which I think is our plan, we would manage in-house, so, you know, it won't be some mega corporation from California or something. It's just us here in San Angelo putting money back into the community, so we just ask that you approve it. Do you have any questions or anything?
Anyone have questions? Thank you, Shane.
Yeah, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Taylor Douglas?
Good morning. Good morning, how are y'all?
Very good.
I'm the owner of Full Circle Properties. My name's Taylor Douglas. Shane kind of summed it up, so we bought this property about two months ago, and to our understanding, it's been vacant for a couple of years. Structurally, the building's good, and again, as Shane mentioned, our goal is to provide affordable housing. So the 6,000-square-foot church building would be reconstructed into six two-bedroom, one-bath multifamily units, and with each, our plan is to, for each unit to have some sort of backyard, whether it's a patio or a full backyard with grass and everything, so.
Sounds great.
Our plan.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Gloria Vega, did you still want to speak? Nope. Okay, then that's it.
Okay. I'm gonna close public comment and take thoughts or emotion.
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. Item three, PD 2406, Village East. A request for approval of a zone change from general heavy commercial, CGCH, PD 00-03 and PD 08-03 zoning districts, to a new planned development, PD 2406 district, with a base zoning of low-rise multifamily, RM1, allowing for smaller lots and set max than usual, as well as accessory uses for retirement community.
Chair Stripling, can you also please read the first three plats under subdivision plats? They're all gonna be presented together.
Yes. Section C subdivision plats, the planning commission has final authority for approval. Appeals may be directed to the city council. Item one, FP 2419, Village East Retirement Community, Section One, request for a final plat. 56 lots and four tracks over 6.114 acres located at Village East Retirement Community in order to individually subdivide each home, and a request for approval of a variance not to have direct and abutting access to publicly dedicated street right-of-way. Case two, FP 2420, Village East Retirement Community, Section Two. Request to final plat lots, excuse me, 19 lots and four tracks over 2.385 acres, located at the Village East Retirement Community in order to individually subdivide each home, and a request for approval of a variance to not have direct and abutting access to publicly dedicated street right-of-way. Case three, FP 2421, Village East Retirement Community, Section Three. Request to final plat 32 lots and two tracks over 4.19 acres, located at the Village East Retirement Community in order to individually subdivide each home, and a request for approval of a variance to not have direct and abutting public access to a dedicated right-of-way.
Thank you. Austin Reed Planner. So we have here, as you've seen, a collection of requests. They're looking to plat and individually subdivide each of these structures. And then we also have a planned development district that precedes that. So these come out of the Vista Della Royale neighborhood. We are in District Number Five, Karen Hesse-Smith's district. The vision plan for this area is commercial, and these three properties span about 12.68 acres. Like I said, first, we're gonna have a request to rezone, a planned development district, and then a request for approval of three final plats, which will individually subdivide on each of these properties. So we'll go ahead and start with the planned development district. We did mail out 24 notices. We received three in support from the subject properties, where about seven residents reached out in support. Did not receive any opposed. So here's a look at the current zoning and vision plan. On the left, we have our zoning. One of the properties is currently CGCH, general and heavy commercial. One of the properties is a planned development district from 2000, and then the other is a planned development district from 2008. Both the planned development districts are pretty similar. They both sort of just allowed for the use of the retirement community, and then mostly kind of dictated how the structures would be built. On the right, we have our vision plan, and it's entirely commercial. The PD will fit into that. So here's a look at the PD standards. That's a lot there on your left. I don't know if you're able to see it or not. It really just shows the standards for minimum lot area, dimensions, our setbacks, and then density and height and things like that. Really, what you need to know is that this is looking to minimize the lot size and increase the floor area ratio in order to kind of allow the structures that are already there and that have been there. Most of these standards actually do already match RS3 zoning. However, we are going with a base zoning of RM1 to allow other structure types, such as maintenance buildings, which wouldn't typically be allowed in RS3 zoning. So our rationale for the planned development district, we do think it's compatible with the surrounding area, because it's surrounded by apartments and commercial developments. We think there's a community in need for senior living, and the PD will continue to allow that, and we don't think that there will be any immediate adverse effects on the natural environment. We'll go ahead and go into the first plat. So this is Section One. It's a final plat for 56 lots and four acres over a little over six acres, I'm sorry, 56 lots and four tracks over six acres. This is again in District Five, same neighborhood, same vision plan, and this is CGCH zoning right now. So here's a look at that plat, all 56 lots and the four tracks. Each lot varies in width. Some of them are under 30 feet wide, and they vary in length as well, somewhere around 80, 90, 100 feet. Here's the same plat with the building footprints, so that you can get an idea of what it looks like. These are all populated by what are essentially townhouse structures right now. They're in groups of anywhere from two to eight. So they do have a variance request for no direct and abutting access to public street right-of-way. They will be serviced by Village East Circle, a private road, which is currently paved about 33 feet wide. And there, you have an image of the road leading into the property. Moving on to Section Two, this is the southernmost of the properties. This one is for 19 lots and four tracks over about 2.385 acres. It is again District Number Five, Vista Della Royale neighborhood, and the vision plan is commercial. This current zoning is the planned development district from 2008. Here's a look at the plat. It's very similar to the last one. It's kind of looped by Village Trail, which is another private road. Again, the lots are roughly the same size. And there it is with the building footprints. Another variance is requested for the same thing, no direct and abutting access to public street right-of-way. Instead, they're serviced by Village Trail, which is a private road. It's paved about 30 feet wide. And then finally, we have Section Three. It's a final plat for 32 lots and two tracks over 4.19 acres. Same case information, this planned development district is from the year 2000. A look at this plat, it's very similar to the other two once again. And then there it is with the building footprints. The same variance requested one more time for no direct and abutting access. These lots are serviced by Village Park Drive, which is another private road. It's anywhere from 30 to 33 feet wide. And then here's just some photos around the property, so you can get an idea of what things look like out there. This is just the front of some homes, I believe in Section One, the largest of the three. This is towards the back of Section One. You can kind of see the side tail building there in the background. And then this is forward, just a few feet, kind of looking at the distance between the homes and the rear, I guess what you could call their rear yard. Front of some more of them homes. And then this is Section Three, I want to say, kind of a look at the space between the homes. This is Section Two. So on to our staff recommendations. For the planned development district, we are recommending approval subject to the following applicable regulations. Except as otherwise specified, the development of the subject properties shall generally conform to the low-rise multifamily RM1 district standards. Residential uses being part of a retirement community shall be specifically allowed as part of the zoning. Offices and maintenance or storage buildings that specifically serve the other properties within the district are allowed as part of this zoning as well. And then the following development standards shall apply, and that's just the table that I included earlier. So on to our staff recommendations for the plats. For Section One, staff are recommending approval of the plat and approval of the variance. The city has said that they do not want to take these streets or maintain these streets, so we are recommending approval of the variances as well, subject to the following five conditions. This one has one note. First condition being that they submit for their tax certificate, that they receive approval of the planned development district, that'll allow the structures that are currently there, that they install water distribution mains and required service connections for each lot. Number four is the same for sewer. If this is the case, they would just need to demonstrate as much with engineering services. And then number five, that they need to indicate or install one-hour firewalls for all the structures on a lot line. We don't want to plat this in if it's breaking the building code. And finally, we have a note that Village East Circle, a private road, should be specified as much as a shared access agreement in addition to being a utility easement. For Section Two, we are recommending approval, again of the plat, and then approval of the variance with the same five conditions for the tax cert, that they receive approval of the PD, water and sewer, and then the firewalls. There is a note connected to this one, that Village Trail, a private road, should be specified as a shared access easement in addition to being a utility easement. And then finally, for Section Three, we are recommending approval, again, of both the variance with the same five conditions, and a similar note, that Village Park Drive, a private road, should be specified as a shared access easement. And I believe that's the end of the presentation for these four requests. If you have any questions, I can try and answer them.
Okay, I have a few. Do they?
Sorry.
Do they not already have individual water connections?
Not that we're aware of. Not for water.
Wow, okay. And then as far as the firewalls, you know, at the time of construction, firewalls were very different than what current code requires on firewalls. So if there are existing firewalls, are we requiring them to bring them up to current code, or just dealing with what they currently have?
Building permits is gonna answer that question better than I do. I'm not sure what would satisfy a requirement for firewalls.
It would be under the existing building code for that type of structure. They would not have to come up to today's building code, but it would be under the existing building code at the time they were built.
Okay. Thank you.
Regarding the private road, who maintains private roads? I mean, that's quite a bit of more traffic that we're gonna be using it. So who maintains the private road? So, who maintains the private road?
Well, right now, it should have been Village East.
Right, and it would move to the property owners that abut that road. They would be maintaining their road, and now, as we understand, Village East is still going to have a management over those properties, and so they would still be managing how those internal private roads are dealt with for maintenance. It would not be just general fund tax dollars to go and maintain those roads.
Is there anyone from Village East here?
Oh, yeah.
I believe they have representatives, yeah.
Just asking. Mark is here, it looked like.
Anyone else have questions? Thank you, Austin.
Thanks.
So, this is the Land Development Subdivision Ordinance, Chapter One, General Provisions. Looks like it's one sheet of paper, is that correct? Okay.
And we'll have Russell as the first public comment for it.
Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comment. Hi, Russell.
Thank you. Russell Gully with SKG Engineering. And this is taking a couple of meetings with staff and a lot of work. This was really kind of come out of the blue for Village East and some other communities. The appraisal district is kind of forcing us to do this, if you will, through some changes. And so, really, nothing on the ground is changing, nothing, the way they operate really is changing. This is such that we can create these individual lots and be able to afford the occupants, homeowners, to live there, to be able to keep or maintain a homestead exemption. So, really, we're going through this just to satisfy kind of an appraisal district requirement and help, I guess, keep housing affordable for some elderly people. So, staff's been great to work with. This has kind of been very unique to some degree, and we've worked through some stuff with them, and been very helpful. And really, what the zoning does, it just unifies the use with the zoning there. We kind of have a mix of three different zonings in the area, so just being under one umbrella, one zoning district would fit that, so we would ask your approval of the zoning. The standards really were kind of tailored to what's on the ground out there, based on the lot sizes, floor area ratio, and that nature, so we believe, and staff's supportive of that, so we would ask your approval of that. You know, Village East really maintains the streets and those areas in a first-class style. You know, it's very nice, very well-maintained. They'll continue to do that going forward. With respect to the comments on the water, so the water, there's fire protection provided. The fire department has looked at it. Some fire hydrants were installed when they were built early on, and so, there's the appropriate fire protection there. The water is provided, I guess, in series or in groups of meters. There's not necessarily and specifically a water main that loops through the property and provides individual water service to each individual dwelling. That's kind of maybe the point of discussion that we, I think, will have to work through and find a resolution on. The sewer, there is public sewer mains there, there are individual sewer services provided. That was a requirement back when they put those in, that the city had asked for. We were able to locate a couple of the sewer main designs that we had done for the most recent two and provided those to engineering. The first one that was constructed, I hadn't been able to locate that yet. Hopefully, engineering can locate it. If not, we would just ask that they go out and, if they need to, camera the lines. They're on the GIS map, they exist, they're there, so we would hope that they can satisfy themselves that there is sewer mains there and functioning in the capacity that they would like them to function. The firewalls, very good question there. When those were built, they were all built as a one-hour firewall, as between townhomes, twinhomes, that one-hour firewall is a requirement. So, if the city wanted to dig back in archives, they could see the plans and drawings and the inspection reports. We're going to, if we need to, we'll address. I think it's just, we're going to go do some inspections, look through some reports, we'll be able to address that one. So, really, we're good with most everything. It comes back to the water distribution issue. And so, from what I'm understanding, from how the city is concerned, is what happens what if? What if Village East ceases to exist as its nonprofit status? Well, and Mr. Skinner or Mark can probably come up and speak to that. I don't know exactly, but from my understanding, they would, another 501(c)(3) or somebody would pick them up and continue operating. So, it really hinges around and concerns is Village East stops functioning and they start selling off these lots to individual, to the individuals, and then they no longer function in the capacity that they are. So, and what we handed out to you was the, kind of the beginning of the ordinance, and it was kind of conveyed to us that appeals, or variances for water mains and sewer mains are not allowed, are not applicable. So, if you read that, under Section Four, it says, "A variance for any provision of this ordinance." These are provisions of the ordinance that they're speaking about, so this states specifically, I find nowhere else that there's an exception, except for water, except for sewer or anything else, so.
Do you guys mind turning the clock off, please? We're going to have some questions.
So, we believe we have the right to ask for the variance, and we have, but ultimately, at the end of the day, we understand the city's concerns for the water mains, and so what we've talked about and offered to do is some sort of deferral agreement that says that we'll run with the property, be recorded, be negotiated between the city and, you know, Village East, that would state if, for some reason, Village East stops to function in its current form and they're conveyed off to individual property owners, then there would be the requirement that the developer or someone other than the city would have the obligation to provide and install the individual water mains and water services. So, our ask is that we could have the deferral agreement for the water mains, and that would then, we could satisfy all these conditions of approval.
So, just to be clear, Russell, the only issue on this list of staff-recommended items that you're objecting to in its state is the water. Is that correct?
Yes, because we believe we've satisfied or can satisfy.
You're in agreement with the others?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, we understand that the ordinance stipulates water mains are required to be installed. I guess what we're asking for is, one, either a variance, if there's question about the legality of whether we can ask for variance or not, we're willing to do a deferral agreement, and then we don't have to argue about whether we can ask for variance or not.
Okay.
So, we're just, we're saying here, we're willing to do a deferral agreement on the water mains and services.
Okay.
So, on the, just out of curiosity, so, these are broken into two, four, six, eight, however many units, so there's one water main that would handle eight, or is it like all fifty-six?
There's, depending on where you are, there's different.
Configurations.
Different configurations. There's multiple meters. There's probably not just three meters, but there's on fifty-six meters. There's four, five, six, eight maybe of them, so.
Okay.
There is, and we can get off into the weeds of maybe some of the other stuff related to the water, but, and there was even a concern brought up about, does this make, because of the way they're functioning, does this fall under Village East needing to be a PD yes, if you will? Would they fall under the rules because there's more than fifteen individual units here? Would they fall under the guise of having to function as a public water system? And the answer to that is, no, they don't, because they're not treating, boosting pressure, doing anything additional to the water. They're just passing it through, so.
Okay, thank you.
So, if a deferral agreement was an option, how would that work?
Well, and we see deferral agreements.
And I'm asking because, I'm sorry, I want to clarify. There's, under the current structure, there's a transfer of ownership periodically on these units, correct?
And I'll defer that maybe to some of the other parties that can answer that.
But, but under a deferral agreement, there would be conditions where there would be a requirement to add a dedicated water main to units if it was conveyed in a certain manner that was not conventional to the way that it's currently operating.
Right, and it's.
And how does the city capture that, you know, that deferral? How do they enforce that deferral and get the taps installed when it's necessary?
Very good questions, and I may defer that to Mr. Dyson or engineering, but, you know, deferrals are kind of something that's going to be recorded of the public record, and it will define what, the situations that we're speaking about. So, from our understanding, the city's concern is if Village East or some sister entity, if you will, another 501, you know, if it's not Village East, they can go to. So, if the functionality changes, if it's no longer maintained, the streets or the private drives, if it's no longer under the guise and maintained by Village East, then that could trigger this water requirement if, and I'll let Mr. Skinner or Mark maybe come up and speak to how they convey, but if, because they're life estates of sorts, and so if, if it no longer functions the way it currently does, and it would be sold off to individuals that are not working under the life estate stuff, and I'm going to kill it, so I'm going to let someone else speak to that, so.
Okay.
But, happy to answer any other questions or fill in where I need to. Thank you.
Thanks, Russell.
Do you want the city engineer first, or do you want the applicants?
Let's get the city engineer, please.
Kevin Pate, City Engineer.
Good morning.
I would like to maybe start with an anecdote. If I had a few acres of property and I had a few houses or trailers on them, and I had a water meter that was under my name, and I ran individual services to those structures, and I got mad at somebody, or they got mad at me, and I cut off their water, what would be their recourse? That's kind of our concern, if you will, is that this nonprofit organization could devolve into chaos in some future legal scenario. Now, as far as I understand it, the ordinance requires that each, as requested for this plat, each individual lot must have individual water and individual sewer. So, it's up to the subdivider to provide that or establish that there is services consistent with our ordinances, materials, and design standards, at their expense, not for the city to go out and prove that they have what we require. Any questions?
Anyone have questions for Mr. Pate? Thank you. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Which one wants to go first? Mark? Okay, so, Mark Davis?
Hello, I am Mark Davis. I am the Executive Director of Village East, and I've been there since its inception, so I can answer all your questions. I did want to, of course, I'm here to ask that you approve this. Some of the things, questions I've already heard, I can answer for you, and there are four-hour firewalls in between each home, because that's what the city required of us back when we started this project. And the irony that they should have all these plans and all these things that we had to have permitted in that process, and so, all of that should be there. Far as the sewer and water taps, again, we had to meet their requirements. Each home has got its own individual sewer tap, each home has its own individual water tap, but they do not have individual meters. One of our concerns, of course, through all this, is that we've been operating this way for twenty-eight years, and evidently, we were fine at that point, and now, all of a sudden, it's become an issue. And because we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, we're trying not to get broke in the process of this by requiring an individual meter to each and every home. Like I say, there's been no problems up to this point. I can tell you the number of meters. There's three meters on Village East Circle, one irrigation meter. On the other two properties, which is Village Park Drive and Village Trail, there's one domestic, one irrigation meter per property. But like I say, I'm here more than anything, of course, like I say, to let you know, I've been there since its inception, when it was literally just dirt, and so, I'm happy to answer any of these questions, because there's not many that I hopefully cannot answer for you.
Okay. Anyone have questions for the applicant?
Thank you. Thank you.
And then James Skinner?
As Russell alluded to, this came about because of a change that the appraisal district made. To, historically, all these homes have been able to claim their veterans exemptions, their homestead exemptions. We got word from the appraisal district that their position was changing on that, and that in order for, that basically, these were leasehold estates, and leasehold estates don't qualify for the homestead exemption, and so, each individual had to have a real property interest in their structure in order to be able to maintain their homestead exemption and their veterans exemptions on. The cost was going to be prohibitive to a lot of fixed-income individuals if they lost those exemptions. And so, what we looked at is what was the best way to structure this, and we looked at a couple of different options. One was to do a condominium association, but that didn't really fit the bill here. The second was what we have, what we're working towards right now, which is that each individual resident gets a life estate in their property. It's subject to multiple restrictions, including they can't convey their life estate interest upon the death of the individual who has it. That interest reverts back to Village East. So, Village East will always continue to have a interest in each one of those properties, it's just a remainder interest, whereas the resident has a life estate interest. This allows us to control that, those residences, and each resident has to enter into a contract with Village East that is separate from that deed, from that life estate deed, and that requires Village East to provide the water services to each one. It requires the road maintenance, it requires, you know, the community center that they have, multiple different services, maintenance requirements, because Village East maintains all these properties rather than the individual resident retaining there. So, there's not only a deed which has restrictions on it, there's also contractual obligation between Village East and the resident. And so, Village East will always maintain a remainder interest in there. If Village East were to go defunct, what would end up happening is because Village East is a 501(c)(3), they have to either offload their assets to another 501(c)(3) entity, but what we're asking for the deferral agreement is that if the operation changes, whereas Village East is going to be divested of its remainder interest, and each one of those remainder interests is going to be individual one, the risk that goes with the property itself, that at that point, an individual meter would be required to be installed. So, there's always going to be something of real, of public record that is going to show what the ownership interest is of that remainder interest, and if that changes, then that's when we're asking that the city can go in and require individual meters.
Okay.
I mean, I would think with that deferral agreement, because in the event that it were to be triggered, it would be a pretty substantial expense, that there would need to be some type of a financial guarantee associated with it.
Okay, like a bond?
Yeah.
Or a letter of credit?
Yeah, that's what I was assuming. I mean, kind of defer to Brandon too on that, but it just seems like to me, there would need to be something attached to it just to back it up, because obviously, if the entity goes defunct, and you're having to offload it to another 501(c)(3), I mean, they're not typically going to have just piles of cash that they can go pay to have it all done, unless there's something already in place.
Yeah, I mean, if it goes to another one, a 501(c)(3), the remainder interest would still maintain, remain intact. What we're asking for a deferral agreement is if these lots, if the remainder interest is going to be given out to each individual resident at that point, that it'd be required. So, the, it would be on each.
They'll continue to function like it is today, unless you actually needed the remainder interest.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, the, obviously, the appraisal district change has a huge impact on the residents of these units.
Right.
And I don't think any of us up here want to. And I don't think any of us up here want to create a hardship for those folks. I think that you guys have a really, really challenging hurdle to clear, to, to maintain the, the, the tax benefit that those residents had before with the change in the circumstance. And, and my concern is, is, is the same as what Luke has identified, and it's, it's if and when, at some point down the road, things change with Village East, and these units are sold individually, they've got to have their own water meter to, to be conveyed.
You're not concerned if it transfers to another company similar to Village East? It's only if they're broken up individually and sold off?
That would be my concern, yes. If, if it continues to operate as it is, and there's an entity that's in charge, as it is today, of, of maintaining the assets, I, I don't, it operates more like an apartment complex today. When you start selling the units off individually, then you, the, there's not a, there's not a party that's necessarily in control of the utilities, like there is today.
Correct.
And I don't think anyone wants to have their water tied to another property that they don't have rights or control over. That's why the city ordinance requires individual meters.
Okay, but if it's a bond and it transfers, let's say, from Village East to XYZ company, does the bond get released back to Village, like, or are they just out, like, how is this?
Yeah.
The bond, it's a performance bond, so that they, if there were, if they were required to go individually meter the units, then they could call on the bond to cover the cost of, or make sure that that happens.
Right, the bond would be the, for the benefit of the individual property, should Village East.
If it's conveyed to another 501(c)(3), the, the bond that Village East has is, is rescinded, and the new operator has to put up the bond, under the same circumstance.
Can I address one thing on?
Yes, please.
So, I know we talk a lot about deferral agreements, and in some cases, I think you all have discretion to grant those. In this one, there's a specific ordinance provision dealing with service connections that actually makes it the discretion of the director of public works or his designee to determine if service line connections can be deferred. So I don't think you all have the authority to grant a deferral for this. Now, if Department of Public Works is open to that, then we can definitely talk about doing one of those agreements.
Okay.
And I think something else to note is we are also willing, and because those are private roads, we're also willing to do a shared water green easement, so that should that necessity become, that easement's already in place to benefit those.
Okay.
So.
It's great.
And this might be a silly question, but from what Brandon just mentioned about us not having the ability to grant that deferral, what would be the ideal situation? Just so we are all on the same page.
I mean, the ideal situation is, is that you all have a certain level of authority, and we ask that you grant, to the extent of your authority, this request, and then if we need to go to the public works department, that we can work that angle from there.
Okay. Thank you.
So what's in front of us, from staff's recommendation, I'm going to assume we have the authority to grant. And the only issue that I see that you guys don't necessarily agree with is the water connections. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
So we can provide the variance, subject to the water approving it?
No. I, I have a lot of stuff to go through, if, if you'll allow me.
Please.
To do that.
Yeah, please. All right, wait, before you do, Brandon, is there anyone else in public comment?
No.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment.
Okay, so in the staff report for these items, we've listed four different code provisions that we think applies to this. Number one is totally outside of the subdivision ordinance. It's Chapter 11, Section 11.02039, dealing with meters. And it provides that the position of meters and the numbers thereof per establishment or structure shall be as determined by the city manager or his designee. And unless the customer convert, conforms thereto, the city shall not be required to furnish water. So even if you guys decide you have the authority for variance, you granted variance for that under our water utilities provision outside of the subdivision ordinance, unless they place those meters, we wouldn't have to provide water service per that code provision. In the subdivision ordinance, we have Chapter 11, Section 1A regarding plat approval, and it says, "As a prerequisite for approval of a plat of a new subdivision or replat of an existing subdivision by the city, the developer shall be required to install water transmission and distribution mains and service laterals within and/or adjacent to such new subdivision as specified and required by the city water utility system." So when it says "as specified by the city water utility system," my interpretation of that is it's specifically granting discretion for that that is outside of the planning commission's purview. Under that, it says, "Water service required, a public water supply from the City of San Angelo and a distribution system shall be installed, meeting all the criteria of this chapter and the City of San Angelo construction design standards, whichever are more stringent." So the design standards is also one I have listed, and it provides that no portion of a service line shall be allowed to cross property boundaries into adjacent private property without coverage by a dedicated public utility or private easement agreement. They may be satisfying that by granting that access easement, I think we noted. So that may, may be satisfied. And then I've already shared with you the discretion of the director of public works is the one that can defer the service lines. So because there's specific authority granted to public works and things of that nature, that's why we're saying it can't be varied.
Okay.
But there is also, in the general provisions, I think the applicant cited, any ordinance provision requiring interpretation or not addressed in these regulations will be interpreted or applied as determined by the planning director. I think the planning director has provided a written interpretation based on these provisions that that can't be varied, but that decision can be appealed to city council.
Okay. I don't know what that means.
Well, so, I mean.
Completely confused.
We're, we're saying you can't, you can't grant the variance for this. If they want to appeal that determination, they go to city council.
Okay. Can we, can we approve what's on the?
You can approve the plat with the conditions as.
We don't have, you're saying we don't have the authority to approve it with a performance bond for the water meters in Lou? Okay, but we can approve this. And if we approve this, they can go to the, the, the water utilities director and work with them to try to get approval, maybe go to the city council?
Yeah. But, I mean, the condition is now, as presented, that they are going to provide those, yes.
Yes.
Can we approve this removing condition three? And then they go to city council, or no, it's just approval or denial, one or the other?
Yes, ma'am.
It's a condition because it's a requirement of the subdivision ordinance.
Can we approve the deferral to the extent of our authority? That's a yes.
Now, again, I mean, as, as it applies to the service connections, I, I don't think you have any authority.
Okay, and again, this might be, maybe I'm not thinking the right direction, but is it better if the applicant pulls this off the table and reevaluates if the shared water easement satisfies the criteria?
I don't, I don't think that issue alone is going to resolve all the issues here.
Okay.
My thought is, it's better if we approve the plat, because then it'll have that authority when they take it to the city council.
The only thing left is the water.
But we're proving more than just the plat. We've got four item, you know, four.
The only issue of contention that the applicant has is the individual water meter connections. They've indicated they can provide evidence for sewer connections, firewalls, and they're good with the shared access easement for the private road. So all of that gets done if we approve this. If, if the water meter individual lots remains, they still have recourse to go to.
Is the applicant.
Water utility director.
Agreeable if we approve this, that we're not pigeonholing them into something that they're not comfortable?
So on that note, would anyone like to make a motion?
Wow. And how many motions are we making?
Just one. Oh.
We do have, remember, there is the plan development.
Four motions.
And then you have three separate plats.
Okay.
Now, you could include them all in one motion, or if you want to do an individual motion for each one. Do you want us to go back to those slides for each item?
Here it is.
Okay. And then again, the only thing that they're not okay with is the water.
Yeah. It would be good to, it would be appropriate to do the PD by itself, and then you could do the three plats together.
I will make a motion to approve PD 24-06 as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the PD. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero.
Okay.
Now we're on the plats.
Since the applicant said that they're okay with moving forward, I will make a motion to approve as presented on the subdivision plats, FP 24-19, FP 24-20, FP 24-21, as presented by staff.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve FP 24-19, FP 24-20, FP 24-21. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five zero. Good luck, guys. FP 24-16, Los Lomas Ranchettes, Section 12, lots eight and nine. A request to final plat, Los Lomas Ranchettes, Section 12, lots eight and nine, being one acre each at 8350 and 8360 Country Club Road, and a variance request for paving width on Country Club Road.
Good morning. Ray Lineberry, planner. So this is Los Lomas Ranchettes, Section 12, lots eight and nine. They do have the temporary address of 8350 and 8360 at the moment. They are one acre each. They're in R and E. The vision plan is neighborhood. It is District One, Tommy Hubert, the Nazworthy Neighborhood. They have also requested a variance for the paving width on Country Club. I have a slide for that, but here's the plat. It is just a normal, they did go to ZBA to receive a variance on the width. In R and E, they're supposed to be 150 feet. They are, I believe it's 132, 132. And that is along this side, 132, and this one is 132. They did receive approval for a variance on that. So the variance request for the paving width, oh, I meant to change that on Country Club Drive, not Los Lomas. I tried to go out there and drive it and take a picture, but it's very hard to see exactly where the lot is, because it's kind of all vacant right there. So I did an overhead shot better. Staff is recommending denial on the variance request, because it is only 21 feet, and we think this curve right here, as you, you come speeding along on that curve, for somebody to stop right about here for their driveway, might be a safety concern. So if you add an extra five foot, that kind of gives them a little bit more of a, a turning lane type. So with that, staff is recommending denial on the paving width variance, but we are recommending approval on the plat with the seven conditions. Tax cert, they install the water service lines to each lot. They provide confirmation of a septic tank permit. They submit plans for the required improvement of Country Club Road, at least the five feet. Drainage study. Sidewalks are required. They have not applied for sidewalk wavering. And then add fire hydrants to the statement, the fire hydrant statement to the plat. Not add fire hydrant, just the statement that if they are required at the time of site plan.
Just an update on that, Ray. We did receive a sidewalk waiver from the applicant for both properties, and I had a short conversation with city engineer, and we both agreed to waive the sidewalks on that, on those properties. We have not formalized it quite yet in a letter, but that, that's been our discussion.
Okay, so number six has been waived.
All right.
With that, is there any questions?
What is the fire hydrant statement?
I'm gonna, it is a statement on the plat. Usually, we have it on the plat that says, if fire hydrants are required at the time of site plan, they will, it is up to the applicant to provide them, that it is not something.
And it's added to the plat?
The statement is. It's just kind of a note.
Right.
Yes.
There's a note on the plat?
Yes.
That's not on the plat that you have?
Correct.
Okay.
So they just add, need to add that note to the plat.
Anyone else have questions for the staff?
Okay, can we go back to the ZBA comment? So they approved the variance?
They approved the narrower lots.
Yes.
There's a 150-foot width requirement for R and E, and these are 135.
132.
132.
But they didn't approve this.
They don't have the authority to grant the paving variance.
Can you better explain the, where the 21-foot, you put it on there in red, but could do it again?
So I'm going to also have the city engineer come up and talk about this. There is a safety concern that this, this is, I'm going to go back, hold on, one more picture. So this curve right in here.
Yes.
Staff is concerned that with that curve, and then somebody stopping right here on a driveway to turn in can be a safety issue. So by adding that extra five feet of paving width, it will kind of act as a, a little bit of a turnoff for them to turn into their driveway.
So you're saying the driveway would be 26 feet?
The road width. The road width. If they add five more feet to it.
Yeah, okay.
So it's 21 now?
Correct.
Are they responsible for the full five feet, or are they responsible for their incremental half?
I guess city staff is recommending a partial variance? Let me go back to that picture I was on. So the other side of the road is city-owned, and there really isn't a, a lot line?
I think to answer your question, Luke, is, the requirement is to get to the minimum. The minimum is 26, and so they need to add, in this case, it sounds like about five feet to get to the 26. If it was, say, something that an incremental half, that would be, that means it meets the minimum, and the city's asking for more, they would do their incremental half. But in this case, since it doesn't quite meet the minimum, it would be that development meeting the minimum for that 260-some-odd feet, 64 feet, along their lot frontages.
So just for the portion of their lot?
That is correct.
The 132 feet.
Twice.
Twice.
[laughing].
With different owners.
Yes, that is correct.
And I do think.
And that road's only 21 feet wide today.
It's what it appears, based on our measurements.
Ooh.
But I know that our city engineer has some, maybe some more technical information than, than what planners do on this side of it.
Okay. Anyone else have questions for Ray?
Can you go back to the plat, Ray, please? Keep forgetting.
I just wanted to clarify my last question. The recommendation from staff, if I'm reading this right, prior to plat recordation, improve Country Club Road, a major collector, by half the additional increment necessary to comprise the minimum total paving width of 36 feet. to comprise the minimum total paving width of 36 feet. That's staff's recommendation, but I guess there's a note in here that says that we are not supposed to approve anything less than 26 feet.
That is the way that city engineer provided the comment to me?
That's correct, but they've asked for a variance, and they've actually asked for a variance to keep it at the current. City staff has agreed that we would give, as Ray mentioned, a partial variance from the, and I'm gonna say 36 feet. Is that the collector size?
Okay, so just to clarify, the road's 21 feet, 36 is what's required.
Right.
Difference is 15. If they're responsible for half, that's seven and a half feet.
Right, and we're.
You're saying five.
We're saying five, that's correct. Thank you for that clarification, yeah.
Thank you. All right, anyone else have questions?
But that's, that's not the way, that's not what staff's recommendation is.
No, the staff's recommending to grant the five foot.
No, they're recommending to go with seven and a half.
In the packet, but if you go to the notes, they're recommending the five.
So which is it?
Yeah.
We've discussed a little bit more with the applicant and everything, and city engineer has agreed to this.
To five?
Yes.
So the slide is correct, the packet is not? Is the applicant here?
The engineer representative is.
Okay, let's open it up for public comment.
Do you want the city engineer first, or you want the applicant?
City engineer, please.
Kevin?
Good morning.
Again, Kevin Pate, city engineer. The minimum requirement for pavement is 26 feet in the ordinance.
Okay.
The, and increasing it to that would enhance safety around that curve.
Right.
But that's not the primary reason. The primary reason is to meet the minimum requirement.
Okay.
So the standard requirement then for major collector, is this major or minor? Is much more.
Major.
Yeah, sidewalks and additional pavement.
More than 35 feet, probably.
Yeah, I think 35 was actually, you don't have that in front of you, do you? Major collector is, I think, 46 feet, is it not, pavement?
If it was built new, I think.
Oh, minimum, minimum is four, okay. So we have those two standards, and then existing, so the existing's a little bit less. So it might meet that. But anyway, that's why we're suggesting 26 feet minimum.
Okay. Anyone have questions for Mr. Pate? Thank you, sir, appreciate it.
So just to confirm, a major collector minimum is 36 feet?
36, okay.
It is.
All right, Ray, who else do we have speaking?
Erica or Blake, which one? Blake, Blake Wildy.
Good morning, everybody, my name is Blake with Wildy Engineering and Surveying. We're here representing the clients. As we stated, we got two lots here, it's approximately 165 feet in length. About 160 feet from the curb were mentioned where there's the safety concern. As I said, this is a, this is more kind of a rural collector street, you know, there's no typical curb and gutter out there. So the available width for any street improvements in this case, there's only about 15 feet from the edge of pavement to the actual boundary line. And when you get out there and drive in this area, it's right in the part where you kind of have this canopy of trees and whatnot. So over half of that 15 feet that's actually available currently, you know, has six-inch, eight-inch, you know, trees within that area, providing a natural buffer and everything else for the traffic. So whenever you, you try to add that additional width on the roadway, it becomes a little bit more difficult because there's no typical curb and gutter, you have borrowed ditches and things like that. So how do you actually make that improvement, incorporate that improvement into this particular area with those trees that are right there? You know, we're just trying to, trying to figure out, how does this work if that, if that goes long? So as you go a little further down, you try to ask yourself, well, I mean, is this actually the right case for this standard to be approved? Or is this the case where maybe the standard should be, be varied, you know, and have that, that variance granted? You know, like I say, it's just a very short, short distance, 265 feet. You know, down the road where there's Lake Shore State, you know, a very large subdivision, they've made substantial improvements to the road. You know, and that's more a place where this is applicable. And so we're just, we're just asking for the, the approval of everything with the variance for the pavement width, and we're just basing it upon, you know, precedence that's been set, you know, at this planning commission and by city staff. So July 15th of this year, just three months ago, FP 24-13 at 7698 South Country Club Road. Road, the addition is Los Lomas addition, was approved with the variance waiver for just a width of 20 feet. And of course, no sidewalk, you know, that, that's only about 3,500 feet down the road, so it's relatively close, it's in that whole area. And so what we're doing is just trying to ask that everything be done with the same, same as what's been done kind of in the area. You know, this is infill area, you know, typically in these infill areas, those paving widths are, you know, are given up to capital improvements projects. That's where this is more applicable, I think, in this case, instead of going to the person that's developing it. This is just two individuals here, if this variance isn't approved, more than likely this doesn't happen, and then there's, there's no tax base dollars. So they bundled it together to try to save some money, to help each other out, so that's, that's kind of where we're at. We just asked for the approval with the variance of the paving width, because if the precedence has been established for at least, if this is Section 12, 11, other cases in this area to be continued for. Any questions or?
Blake, I want to be really clear, 132 feet of frontage and five feet of pavement is less than $1,000.
Right.
And you're telling me the feasibility of these two lots with new homes being put on them is in jeopardy over less than $1,000 of variance? Is that what you're telling us?
Well, if that's the only thing you're basing your decision on, I can't answer that question.
Okay, all right. Sorry, go ahead.
No, so I'm looking at it as, I mean, because I drive that road all the time. So if you are adding five feet, what is that doing to water flow distribution coming down the current existing?
Well, as I stated, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot of room for those improvements, so it would require the applicant to, you know, go along and remove all those trees from the right of way to be able to widen the road and extend that borrowed ditch out another five feet, and just, you know, make it to where it works, you know. This situation has existed since, you know, the Lake Nazworthy wasn't pounded. This is a county road that's been taken over maintenance by the city. The city has deemed that it's okay at their current width because they haven't widened it even though it doesn't meet their own standard. You know, it's currently deficient. It's just that there's an opportunity right now to, you know, have that done, but is this the right case? You know, applicants don't feel like it's the right case, you know, that's your decision, y'all, y'all can make your approval or denial. So we're asking for the approval of the subdivision with the variance for the paving width.
Okay, anyone else have questions for the applicants? Thank you, Blake.
Thanks.
Okay, and then Erica Wildy.
All right. Good morning.
Morning, Erica Wildy, Wildy Engineering and Surveying. I did want to make note, I think you're a little off on your $1,000. You're looking at about probably $10,000 to do that.
And why would it be that much?
To build it to city standards with the base and all of that requirement, and that's what you're looking at closer.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And that is it for public comment.
Okay, so there was reference to a case, FP 24-19, Los Lomas. Can you show us where that lot is?
So it is way, way further up there.
Okay.
Best I can do.
All right.
A reference was made to the feasibility due to trees. Will there be tree cutting and drainage ditch, or is this?
Very clearly.
Is it feasible to do it?
There are a lot of trees, when I drove down there, there were a lot of trees, so that is a possibility.
And that's a question for our engineering team based on their design standards for a street, and how the street construction would take place. Because my assumption, and I would just have to check with them, I, the question comes into mind, you talk about drainage, is curb and gutter required with this extension or not? Or are they going to allow the bar ditch and be reconstructed in some way? But that would be really a technical question that I think our city engineers would be able to facilitate an answer on that.
And that's fair.
On the, excuse me, on the, on the referenced 24-19, further up Country Club Road, what exactly was, the variance was approved to leave the 20 feet, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, ma'am.
It perhaps was not on a coming or going curve, is that correct?
Correct, it was not.
And you know how much frontage?
Yeah.
I do not remember.
It was 100 feet on that one. It was a single lot, but it, that is correct. There's not a curve adjacent or, you know, north or south, it's a very straight distance. But at the same time, we, we recognize that it's costly, but that's, that's where we have to make decisions, what's in the best interest of the public good.
Okay, so if we deny this, or it has to go to the 26 feet as you've proposed, or plan, staff has proposed, then it's only 26 feet for that two lots.
256, or 266.
So how does that not pose other safety issues?
Because the rest of the road's not that way. And if, further up the street, we didn't change it, and it's still 20.
We certainly understand your logic there, and that would be something they would work with the technical design of how would they merge that over? Does it just end up being shoulder? Does, I mean, that's something they would work with our engineering team on the design standards of how to build that additional part of the street.
You know, Cox Lane, when we started doing the partial, that, it did help. You know, from a safety hazard, the, I know it was a short runway, but it really does help that extra, so you gotta start somewhere.
Cox Road's also more traveled, like if you think about the people that actually live in Los Lomas, they're coming up and they're turning in before this, primarily, I mean, you might have a few coming the other direction, but, it's like a county road, I mean, it's not the best, I mean, I know it's owned by the city now.
All right, are we, are we done with public comment? I'm gonna close public comment and take, take a motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to approve, but give the variance on the pavement width because I truly feel, although the staff has some safety concerns, I also think that expanding it for that short period and then having it come back is also a safety concern, as well as having adverse effect on the natural environment when you get into digging up some of the tree roots and building to city specs on the street.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve and to grant the paving variance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Two in favor? Okay, and opposed? Aye. So that failed. I have another motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
To be clear, Trinidad, I just want to make sure that's with the five-foot paving. I just want to make sure that there's not a miscommunication of, oh, it's really the seven-foot paving, but you're intending it to be the five-foot paving.
That is correct, with the five, and I'll make a motion to approve as presented with the five-foot as indicated on the slides and not the presentation.
There's also a note on the staff recommendation number six of requiring sidewalks.
Let me try it again.
And the sidewalk variance, yep.
They did request a waiver for the sidewalks?
That's right, I'm sorry, you said that.
Yes, sir.
So that's.
That has been waived.
But it's on there, so do you want me to redo that with?
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fine, that it would be, that's fine.
Make a motion to approve as presented with the five-foot variance as indicated on the slide, and a waiver for the sidewalks.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion and a, and a second to approve requiring five-foot paving and removing the sidewalk variance. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
All right, 3-2, passed. All right. All right, FP 24-17, Los Lomas Ranchettes, Section 13, Lot 9. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, a request to final plat, one lot measuring 1.5 acres, and located at 149 Los Lomas Drive in Ranch and Estate zoning, and a request for approval of a variance for the minimum required paving width on Los Lomas Drive, and a request for approval of a variance to not construct a new minor arterial road.
All right, thank you, Austin Reed Planner. As you mentioned, this is a final plat for one lot, over one and a half acres. We are again in District Number 1, Tommy Hubert's district, the neighborhood is Nazworthy. Again, we are in Ranch and Estate, R and E zoning, the vision plan here is neighborhood. But here's a look at that plat. There's an existing home on this lot already, it's been there since about the 80s, I believe, and I assume that the property lines have been that way that long as well. The lot's about 100 feet wide by about 540 feet long, depending on where you measure. The lot did also receive a variance from the ZBA zoning board of adjustments for that lot width, so that has been approved. So our first variance request is for the paving width on Los Lomas Drive. It's currently paved at about 20 feet wide, depending on where you measure again, whereas 26 feet is that required minimum within our subdivision ordinance. And there you have a photo of what that looks like in, in front of the home, with the home being there to the right. So if you look to the map here on the left, there's actually a future minor arterial that's planned to run north-south there behind the property. That's actually right outside of city limits as well. That road is not currently built in any spot. If it were to be built, it would require paving with the 48 feet and about 68 feet of right of way. So on to our staff recommendation, we are recommending approval of the plat. We are recommending denial of the variance, and I believe we have a representative from Engineering Services who can speak more to that justification if you have questions. And then we are recommending approval of the variance to not construct that minor arterial, because that would not make sense. But we do have four conditions of approval. Condition number one being for the tax certificate. Condition number two being that they provide plans demonstrating the improvement of the road to the front of the home, or receive a variance for it. Number three being that they provide plans for the construction of the new arterial behind them, or receive approval of variance for it. And then finally, for a drainage study. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them.
Anyone have questions for the staff? Is the right-of-way for the minor arterial granted on the plat?
No, I don't believe so.
The property that, where that minor arterial goes is already city property, and it's already at the right width. While it's not dedicated right of way, this property would not have to dedicate any additional right-of-way.
Okay, great, perfect. Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone speaking on this case? Austin?
We have Blake and Erica who have signed up again.
Okay.
Good morning again, my name is Blake with Wildy Engineering and Surveying. We're just to ask for your approval as presented, but with both of the variances for the paving width. Just, this goes back to something similar we just talked about, most of my things I'm gonna say here, but this applicant was doing some home improvements, that's what's kind of triggering this plat. And so now on top of doing the home improvements, a potential road widening is just something that's, doesn't fit with this area. Once again, you know, it's a short stretch that's on a road. Once again, you know, it's a short stretch that's on a road that's not an arterial of any sort of matter. The city hasn't deemed it to be a safety issue and let it go beyond the minimum standards as required by them, and so we're just asking for approval as presented with both the paving width variances. Any questions?
Do you want to have questions for Blake?
What's that? We would like for the approval of the variances for the paving width for both sides on the east end with, for Los Lomas and the future arterial.
Okay. Thank you, Blake. Yes, sir. Anyone else speaking? Okay.
Nope, no more.
All right. I'm going to close public comment. Take thoughts or emotion.
Can we bring back the city slide, please, or city recommendations?
The recommendation slide.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thanks.
There we go.
I'm going to make a motion to approve as presented, but I'm going to ask for the var... As Blake mentioned, asking for the variance in the paving width of both sides to be removed.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve granting the variances on the paving widths for both Los Lomas and the minor arterial road. Is that correct? All in favor, say aye.
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 So five-zero. All right. FP 2418, Trinity Park, Section 2, a request to final plat. Trinity Park, Section 2, being 19.997 acres located at 518 and 528 Country Club Road, and a variance request from paving width and curb and gutter on Country Club Road.
Good morning. Rayline Berry again. The applicant has requested this one have a 30-day extension.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion on that?
Motion to approve extension.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to continue this case to next month's meeting in November. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. And finally, RP 2423, Lasker's Edition, Block 34, a request to replat Block 34 of Lasker's Edition being .483 acres located at 1920 North Martin Luther King and 223 West 20th Street.
Correct.
Okay.
So it is the corner of Martin Luther King and 20th Street, and it is Lasker's Edition, Block 34. It was originally three lots. They're plating it into two lots, .483 total acres. It is in District Four, Lucy Gonzalez. The neighborhood is Reagan. It is zoned, general commercial, heavy commercial. However, it does have a legally non-conforming use for residential, and the vision plan is commercial. This is the plat.
You skipped right over that, didn't you?
So the applicant has chosen to curve it right here as the platted lot line. And I'm going to go back the overhead picture, because if you see, it will match the fence. So... And I'm going to explain a couple of these notes. Staff is recommending approval with three conditions and three notes. The conditions are Tax Cert and the install water and wastewater services is kind of, if it's needed. And then sidewalks are required along Martin Luther King and 20th Street. The waiver has been denied. They have appealed the sidewalk waiver denial to you guys, so you will hear that next. We're going to do that one as a separate item, kind of a little drop-down on the agenda.
Okay.
Kind of the same, but...
Why don't we hear it with us?
It is with us, but I'm going to leave it to last. Is that better?
Okay.
Okay. So the notes are a minimum of a six-foot opaque fence, so I'm going to go back to the overhead shot. According to the zoning ordinance, you have to separate residential with... And RM1 is considered a multifamily, so you have to put a fence along... Oops. That's a little too far, but right there. The owner is aware of that, and another one is confirmation of a sewer service. Engineer... Engineering had some questions on that, that they'll work with the applicant on. And then the other note is, since a fence is required to separate the residential from the... These apartments right here, this driveway that's right there, the owner will have to work that out a little bit more, because either the fence has to go to where that driveway is to the apartments, or the driveway is to the house. So either way, they have to come up with another driveway, which the owners are already aware of and have plans to do that. But those are the notes. And then I'm going to let Erin discuss the sidewalk. Why the sidewalk waiver was denied.
Good morning. Erin Vinoy, Director of Planning and Development Services. So yes, they did request a sidewalk waiver. We did deny that waiver, and so they have appealed that decision to this group. So as you guys can see, this is Martin Luther King here. We do have a fairly busy shopping area over here, and then Bryant's to the adjacent piece. Right up here, you can't really see it in this, is also a park area. Now, they are over the distance for, if you're looking at the ordinances, if they were RS1, they are over the distance from a park to require a sidewalk. However, and I'm going to see, she may have had it in there. Do you have the zoning anywhere? Okay. Well, they are, as she mentioned on here, CGCH. So in our subdivision ordinance, it specifically talks about CGCH and that it needing to have a sidewalk. While these two structures are pre-existing, pre-existing our zoning ordinance, meaning they have a conditional use to be residential, the zoning still requires the sidewalk. There is a sidewalk on this side of the street. Streets like Martin Luther King function better with sidewalks on both sides. While you could argue, well, this might be a middle-of-the-road connection, we understand that, but getting people on both sides of the street to a better intersection is better in the long run for our future. Now, this property is not redeveloped, so it doesn't have that trigger right now. The trigger is when they go and redevelop. This process triggers that. So we felt like in a commercially zoned area that is adjacent to residential with people that do walk in the area, coming over to these shopping areas, up to the park, things like that, this is the time to require the sidewalk. There could be a discussion of a sidewalk deferral with the applicant if they want to defer that to some type of construction trigger. The challenge is, what is that trigger in the future? But that's for the applicant and city staff to work out. But we did not feel appropriate at this stage to just waive the sidewalk. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any question on the sidewalks.
Yeah. What about the sidewalk on 20th Street?
It is a very, very wide right-of-way. Again, it's adjacent to commercial property, so we did not waive that at this time. That is a consideration for you guys. If y'all want to say, well, you definitely need it on Martin Luther King, and we might waive it on 20th, which would be this piece right here. But our theory is that anytime you get pieces of sidewalk that connect into neighborhoods, that is helpful. Again, this may not be the type of development or the trigger for that, but all of our principals would point back to, this is the first trigger that's happened to require that. We should stick to that requirement in this case, as it is benefiting the public good.
Is there any other sidewalks on that side of the road?
On Martin Luther King or 20th, or both?
MLK.
MLK? Probably not in the next couple of blocks. I think there are further up, and I know there are some further down, but it's very spotty. It's not continuous, so I don't want to give you the impression that, oh, yeah, this is the only place they have not gotten sidewalks, so I don't want that to come across. But this may be the first redevelopment in this particular area that would trigger that.
And do we know what the applicant's intended use is? I mean, is the offices are going to be...
As of right now, and they're here, and so I think they may be able to speak to that. I know this is kind of multifamily. I think that's still their intent. I think they may have a person that's there that's doing single-family, so I think that may be their intent right now. I don't think it's a tear-down and redevelopment that I'm aware of, but they could answer that better than I could.
So does it make more sense for them to have it rezoned? Could we rezone it?
Well, they would have to ask for a rezoning, but they have a conditional use that allows those uses, the land uses. I would argue that that's an area that would probably be rezoned to an RM for multifamily, which would then still trigger the sidewalks, especially being adjacent to major commercial areas.
Okay.
I also want to remind both of you that there is a bus stop right there at the corner. It didn't... I don't have the red mark, but at the corner, the top right corner, Martin Luther and 20th.
Up here?
Yes, right in the middle of the yard, there is a bus stop.
And it is on that side of the street?
It is.
Okay.
Looking at this, I think sidewalks on MLK makes sense. There's a lot of traffic on that road already, and it'd be kind of dangerous to be walking in the street to not have sidewalks. Along 20th Street, I... Yeah. I mean, I understand the argument the staff's making. The counter to that would be that there's a lot of existing that doesn't have sidewalks, and... Man, it's hard. I'm a sidewalk guy, too. I love sidewalks. Okay. Anyone else have questions for the staff? All right. We're going to open it up for public comment. Ray, who do we have?
Jack or Max? Who wants to go first? So Max Jacobs.
If I put my finger on here, it won't show up on there.
Yes, if you do touch it, or it will do those types of things.
Okay. Okay. Thanks for hearing me. Max Jacobs, I'm the owner. So I am respectfully requesting a waiver to the sidewalk requirement on two grounds, fairness and common sense. Now, on the fairness side, Mr. Vinoy mentioned that Martin Luther King lends itself to being ideal for a sidewalk on both sides. So I have to wonder, the city recently repaved MLK, did a beautiful job, did not see fit to put a sidewalk on the east side of MLK, which would have been a fraction of the cost of the actual paving job. So I'm viewing it as, well, we don't think it's important enough to do that, but we will ask landowners to do it incrementally through the years. And I... That doesn't sit right with me personally. From a common sense standpoint, another question was asked, I think you did, about how many sidewalks are on the east side? There's a grand total of zero between 12th Street going north... I guess I don't have to really touch it. Going north to the end of MLK at 29th, there are none. From 12th Street below, there's a couple of raggedy ones that have been there forever, you know, grown up with weeds over the edges and so forth. Common sense tells me almost the zoning is what it is. And to answer your question, I plan on keeping it. I'm not going to tear anything down at this point, but I am going to make it a lot nicer, because it's pretty rough over there. And the more funds that I have available to making the buildings nice and the fencing and whatnot, it'd be better for the neighborhood. But if we were to zoom out in this picture, you would find that the west side is really where the development is. The sidewalk is complete all the way up MLK, the entire length of it. There's some responsibility, in my opinion, for pedestrians, especially with the businesses and the parks being on the west side. If they live on the east side, what is the harm in walking across the street in one spot, which there's no sidewalks in the middle of a street anyway? You walk across the street, and then you go north and south to get anywhere you want. The east side is mostly residential, so it doesn't really make sense. And if we were going to impose on property owners to incrementally do this sort of sidewalking, if I can make a verb out of sidewalk, I mean, it would take forever to make a material difference in that street. So I think that from a fairness point of view and really a common sense point of view, it's just unnecessary. There is a bus stop there in that corner, but the only thing that that sidewalk would do would be to actually allow my tenants, who happen to need a bus, to walk from the southwest corner of that red box up a few feet to where the bus stop is. Nobody else in that up-and-down MLK has any sidewalks, so they would... What would we really be gaining? And the sidewalk on 20th Street makes absolutely no sense whatsoever, but questions?
Do you want to have questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Jacobs.
Yes, sir.
Thank you all. All right. Anyone else wish to speak on this?
Jack Downey with SKG.
Jack Downey, SKG Engineering. Thank you for hearing me. I just wanted to mention also on 20th Street, there's a 100-foot right-of-way there, so there's plenty of right-of-way. I don't think there's an issue there, and I think that is something to take into consideration with the right-of-way.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Jack. All right. Anyone else?
That was it.
All right. I'm going to close public comment.
Okay. So in discussion, I think 20th Street is silly due to the width of the street to actually put a sidewalk on that street. As far as having a sidewalk running down the west side already that is connecting to commercial, to parks, et cetera, that makes sense. And again, I understand where the city's coming from, but looking at these incremental sections of sidewalks, in my mind, almost makes it more dangerous that you're having somebody walking here, jogging here, then, you know, they need to get over here, so they're walking back across instead of walking directly down the current sidewalk that's established and cutting over onto 24th Street or whatever street that they're attempting to get to. So that's my opinion, and I'll let all of you state yours before making a motion.
I totally agree with you. Crossing the street once is a lot safer. If you're trying to walk on a sidewalk and then walk back on the road, it does get a little bit dangerous, and that does have high traffic, and the speeds are not necessarily appreciated by some individuals, so I totally agree with you.
How many units are in that apartment complex? Six?
We believe six.
Eight. And then there's the single-family?
And then the single-family house.
Is there... What's the minimum parking requirement for that number of units, and where is that parking?
Well, the... Since it's established before the zoning ordinance came in in 2000, and it does not need a change of occupancy, we don't have the ability... it does not need a change of occupancy, we don't have the ability to enforce certain requirements of parking until there's a change of occupancy. And so we can't make them improve the surface, any of those, those are things he may choose to do, and he may have that decision, but I want to say for RM1, I think it's 1.5 parking spaces per unit, but, and he probably has enough space there for parking.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Okay. Can we go back to staff recommendations, please? Okay, I am going to make a motion to approve as presented, but remove condition number three regarding the sidewalks along Martin Luther King as well as along 20th Street.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with variances for sidewalks on MLK and 20th. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Aye. Four-one. All right. Planning Directors' Report.
Thank you, Chairman Stribling. We're doing a really good job with our limited staff. We have a position open. As I don't know if I mentioned last time, Sherri Bailey is retiring at the end of this month, and so we're sad to see her go, but she's done a great job for us and had a great career in planning. But Ray and Austin, as y'all saw by the presentations today, are just really doing a fantastic job. Kim Garmoney, as I introduced last time, she's, she hasn't left us, she's still with us, so we're very excited. Kim's got a lot of great ideas and a lot of energy, and is going to continue to help us grow in that area. The Planning Division has a lot of things in the next six to 12 months that we'd like to start working on our strategic priorities of what our division does. So we'll be bringing different things to you guys to help get some more guidance of where we want to go. We do feel like we're confident in moving forward with a grant opportunity to write a grant for a comp plan update, which really will set the precedent of what our community wants. So we had lots of discussion on sidewalks today. Our comp plan in 2003 said pedestrians are very important, sidewalks should be everywhere, but yet you continually see that we have variances for those. Okay, is it really that important? Do we need to keep that in there? And so that's, those are things that we're going to be looking at. We're going to look at, I know we talked a little bit about floor area ratio. Does that still make sense? Do we need maybe a little bit more density in some areas? The other big thing that we've had a discussion about is fiscal stewardship, being responsible of how wide does that road really, really need to be, because we're going to have to pay for it. Taxpayers will be paying for that for a long, long time. So do we really want to do that? And we also learned that it's like a, our communities, everything that we have is like a portfolio. You need some single-family housing, you need some multifamily, you need commercial, you need industrial, you need all of those things. So I know there's always this concern in our community that, oh, well, our community's just going to turn to multifamily. Well, that's not the way we look at things. We look at things as what makes sense for our community? What does our community want? And then how do we do our infrastructure that makes sure that if we have a high volume of single-family, which our community was built on, that we're able to stay fiscally smart and not overspend on certain things? And so that's really important, and you guys will be a part of that. So we have a lot of big things coming ahead of us. The other thing I just wanted to keep in everybody's, back of everybody's mind, Ray's may have already made some contacts with some of you guys. There may be some reappointments that need to take place between now and January. January is when we will vote again on our board chair, vice chair, so just want to keep that in your back of your mind. We have a couple of city council dates to get to, so that we can make sure that we still have a full board and we have the right people on, that have been reappointed as necessary. So keep that in the back of your mind. If you have a question of, hey, do I need to be reappointed? Check with Ray, she can help you out. She does a great job with keeping us on our toes on that. So with that, I think that's all I have for today. Thank you.
I don't know what our capabilities are on the slides and whatnot, but it seems like there's often cases that are, you know, for instance, Mr. Jacobs, you know, like trying to look north or something like that, or even when we were looking at on the Los Lomas situations. Is there a way to paste like Google imaging links in here so that, like Google Maps, that we can actually move if somebody had?
I think it's very difficult for us to do that, mapping to our GIS links, and I think the second thing I'll say is maybe that's somewhere where staff could get better, that we broaden our view to make sure that we're giving you all the information you can, whether that's in our background information, whether that's here at the podium, so that we are being able to answer confidently questions that are coming up, and so that you have that. But I do see your point that maybe sometimes a bigger view makes a big, important difference. So I think we'll take that in consideration, look at some solutions for that.
Thanks, Erin.
All right. Thank you, Erin. The next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled on Monday, November 18th, at 9:00 AM, East Mezzanine, City Hall, at 72 West College Avenue. Adjournment, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Five-zero. It's 11:41. Thank you.